It's on the beginning of Saturday Night Live. I expect somebody to... Okay, there we go. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session meeting for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to ask that... Just going to call you Clerk Wykoff. Clerk Simmerson, please read the rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present establishing a quorum. Folcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. We have all seven council members here this evening. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilmember Fisher, please lead us in the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is public comments. This is a limited public forum for people to speak to the council during this council meeting. Topics are limited to items on tonight's council meeting agenda and to topics specific to city laws, budget, and operations under the council's authority. Comments that are outside this limited scope will not be allowed. Comments that do not follow the council's rules of procedure will not be allowed. Person who council rules of procedure is amended by the council action on December 12, 2023. Oral public comment is limited to in-person comment only for all city public meetings, including city council and all city boards and commissions until further notice. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Spoken comments that are not within the scope or time limit of the limited public forum can be sent in writing. Information on where to send right written comments is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. We'll now begin the public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the council this evening? All right, seeing none and not having anybody who signed in. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is a municipal court update. We're now at item five, 5.1 in particular. Municipal Court 2023 Annual Report. Judge Ness, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jessica Ness. I serve as the Monroe Municipal Court Judge. It is, yes. Can't hear me very well? I'm sorry. Let me step back. I'm honored to be here with you this evening to present to you the 2023 State of the Court Report. So I'll highlight really two areas from the report for you this evening. I'll talk with you generally about the court filings, our court relocation in August, and then statewide issues affecting the judicial branch of government. And then the second area that I'll be focusing on are our programs. So our domestic violence program and then our therapeutic court program. So by way of a brief overview of the court, if we can go to the next slide. Monroe Municipal Court handles misdemeanor cases, gross misdemeanor cases, and traffic infractions. Misdemeanor cases are those that are punishable by up to 90 days in jail and up to a $1,000 fine. Those types of crimes include disorderly conduct, shoplifting, criminal trespass in the second degree, driving on a suspended license in the third degree. And then gross misdemeanor cases are those that are punishable by up to a year in jail, up to a $5,000 fine. Those types of cases include driving under the influence, assault in the fourth degree, including domestic violence assault in the fourth degree, and theft. Our court filings did increase this last year. There's a pie chart here that's reflected on your screen. And it shows that most of the filings are in the form of traffic infractions, traffic tickets, which is pretty typical of a municipal court. The orange and gray sections of the chart is where I will bring your attention to. The orange section of the chart reflects person and property crimes, while the gray section is more, it encompasses all of our driving type crimes. So the person and property crimes are those of assault, theft, criminal trespass in both degrees, possession of a controlled substance, disorderly conduct, resisting arrest. And then the driving crimes are crimes, again, like DUI, reckless driving, hit and run, would include driving on a suspended license in all of it degrees, all of the degrees. All right, we can move on to the next slide. All of these cases are being heard in our temporary courthouse. We are housed in the Parks and Rec Building. You can see the outside of the building in this slide as well as the lobby area. And then Sherri, if you could go on to the next slide. And then here's the inside. This is the courtroom. It's pretty tight quarters. And you can see that we're in with the Parks and Rec. They're a fun group to work with. They posted a cone with an orange flag in it for when court is in session so that they are careful to keep the volume down. And then you can go on to the next slide as well, Sherri. These are some of the workspaces we have. The picture on the right, that conference room, is set aside for attorneys to meet with clients and for resource providers to meet with individuals who are in need of services. So we're very thankful that the city was able to keep us on the main campus. That was really important. We are very much looking forward to the construction of the new courthouse. Yeah, we can go on to this next issue. So I do, I don't want to spend a lot of time here. I did want to point out these statewide issues that are affecting the judicial branch, access to justice, the shortage of public defense attorneys, and court security. So just to touch on these, access to justice is very important to this court. One way that we've been able to successfully create access to the court is through the use of virtual court hearings through a Zoom platform. And so those people that have childcare responsibilities or transportation issues or perhaps they don't have paid leave benefits can still meet their court obligations while maintaining their other obligations to the community. The other one that I wanted to bring to your attention was the Blake Refund Bureau that was established this year. That was as a result of the Washington State Supreme Court overturning or finding unconstitutional the statute as it relates to possession of drug paraphernalia and any of the possession of a controlled substance cases that are now being filed at the municipal court level. And so we are seeing some of those cases, possession of a controlled substance cases being filed here in the court. And we are working with the Blake Refund Bureau. It's just for those individuals that had their convictions overturned and also paid their fine. So that's an important piece of that. The other one here that I'll touch on just briefly is the shortage of public defense attorneys. And there's been a lot in the news about this. The issue really is that a person is charged with a crime and they may be awaiting a trial and so they're in custody until an attorney is appointed to them. And having an attorney is an important constitutional right. You may find that as you're talking with Monroe residents that they are interested in some of these issues. And so there's more information in your packet tonight, but I just briefly wanted to touch on those. If you have questions as you're talking with community members about any of these, you're always welcome to reach out to me as well. Let's see, let's go on to the next slide. So let's talk about our programs. I'll first touch on our domestic violence program and then spend the remainder of my time talking with you about our therapeutic court. So at the very end of 2022, we started this domestic violence or moral recognition therapy program. Our probation counselor is the facilitator of the class. It's a 24-week course. It is not just for convicted domestic violence offenders. There may be people that are on DOC supervision, so Department of Corrections supervision, or even required to take this class if they are going through a parental rights case. There is a fee that is associated with the course, but it's quite a bit more affordable than the traditional batter's treatment that many courts require domestic violence offenders to participate in. I think what's most important is that this program has been proven to be more successful than the traditional batter's treatment program. It's a treatment strategy that seeks to reduce recidivism by increasing moral reasoning as individuals work their way through the workbook. It's called Bringing Peace to Relationships over the course of a 24-week class. And so far, we've had four graduates of this program. So finally, on to our therapeutic court. We can go on to the next slide. We launched our therapeutic court in April of 2022. The launch was possible with your support. Thank you, council, as well as a grant that we received from the state in the amount of $158,779. And that was for the time period of January 2022 to June 30th, 2023. The goal of this program is really to connect low-level, quality-of-life-type offenders with community resources in an effort to provide them with treatment and then other basic living needs that they may have. Our hope is that in making these connections, that we can steer an individual successfully out of the criminal court system. Community court is very collaborative. Oh, it doesn't look like the entire slide got on there. Maybe I made it too big. Okay. The community court process, it's very collaborative. It involves the court team, which consists of myself, the program coordinator, our court administrator. We work with the police department, the prosecutor, public defender, and our service providers. And we work together around an individual so that they can achieve their goals. We do require each participant to be assessed for substance use disorder. And at that initial screening, we can also see if there are some other needs that they may have, which might include a mental health assessment. It could include working with them on getting relicensed or life skills education, or again, just those basic needs. In 2023, if we can go on to the next slide, another, looks like you fixed that. Okay, on the next slide, another funding opportunity became available. And because we'd received that previous funding, that grant, we were really first in line to receive this additional funding. And again, this was with council support. Thank you, council, for acting so quickly, signing that letter of support for us. I heard from other municipal courts, other courts that were seeking this funding, that that was a stumbling block for them in getting their application in on time, but not here. So thank you for that. So with your support, we received grant funding in the amount of $236,934. Again, July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. And you can see from the chart that a large portion of the funding is as it relates to the personnel salaries and benefits. And what's unique about this, and I wanted to point this out to you, is that is time spent on community court for the judge, our court administrator, and then our program coordinator. This round of funding also included support for our public defender and our prosecutor time spent on community court. And that was something that was different than the previous funding that we had. The community court, it's still new. We started at the end of 2023 using a tool to review our program, to find areas that we can improve and just ensure that we are keeping on track with our goals. The bulk of that evaluation will be done this year, and then I'll be sharing what we learned from that. And we can go on to the next slide, Sherri. With the last few minutes of my time, I'm going to shift from numbers and data and share with you the story of one of our community court participants. And so on the slide that you have up there, if you'll direct your attention to the bottom slide, this is Ashley with her three-month-old son. Ashley had an extensive criminal history, including felony convictions, and she had served a lengthy prison sentence. She got clean in 2023 when she found out that she was pregnant with her son. The crimes that she'd committed happened right before she began her treatment program. When she came to the court, she would later tell us that she thought that with her history, there was no way she was getting out of this without serving some significant jail time. And she'd had a conversation with her mom and her other children about what it would look like for her to be away from her family and her newborn while being in jail for these charges. And so she was really excited when she heard about the community court program. We had her get a new assessment and continue with the treatment that she was already engaged in. We had her do a couple of other things. She also did some volunteer work through her church as well. And she successfully reached her goals and graduated from the program. She's a huge advocate of the program. She's actually going through a peer training program so that she can work with other community court participants in reaching their goals. At her graduation ceremony, she told us that the program was a blessing for her and her family. And so I do believe that at Monroe Municipal Court, we are making a difference in the community. In Ashley's case, it wasn't just for Ashley, but it was for her children, for her mom. It's a benefit to our community as well. And so, Honorable Mayor, Council, I am so thankful for your support, and I am honored to be working alongside of you in Monroe City Government. And we can thank you. We can go to the last slide. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to take those. I just wanted to provide a shorter presentation for you this time around.
Thank you very much, Judge Ness. Council, any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say thank you. I was just reading through all of the things you're involved in, the different volunteer youth, Buffalo Youth Court Advisory Committee, et cetera. And you get out in the community and do really good work, and I just want to thank you for that. And also thank you for bringing a personal story of someone who benefited to us. That always helps. You know, we just look at these numbers and know that the program's out there, but for you to bring a story to us means a lot to me personally and I'm sure to the other council members. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge Ness. Appreciate your report. Love the stories, love the pictures, read through it, and always encouraging. And I'm always so proud of our cities, the way that we kind of blaze the trail with this before other cities have. And we go to different, at other city events countywide, when we're talking with other council members from other cities and they're talking about this kind of thing. Like they're thinking about how to do it and everything, and they haven't even started. And it's always so nice to sit there and listen to that and think, wow, we're like on the cutting edge, blazing the trail, while these other cities that are fairly large around here are just considering it. So thank you for all, your whole team. Appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Walker.
I think Councilmember Hanford kind of stole what I was going to say, but what I wanted to mention was when I first got on to council and I did the tour of the temporary facility, I can say that it was really a point of pride off the bat to hear about how your program was going and just to get that idea and that understanding that we are kind of leading the pack and we're kind of at the tip of the arrow and we couldn't do it without you. So bravo to you and the entire staff. Pam and Sherri, obviously, I know you guys are an amazing, huge part of it as well. You guys were there that day, but the rest of the team is wonderful as well. So thank you for the work that you do for the city. You're amazing. Thank you, and awesome story, too.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, they said everything.
So I, it was one of the things that the first year that I started, I learned that we were going to have a municipal court, and we had to carve out space for the municipal court. And it's been quite a journey these last 10 years to go from, you know, the municipal court there and maybe the goals we initially had for it and some things that had shifted. And because of that investment in the municipal court a decade ago, the services we're providing have changed. And I think that, you know, the things that we're dealing with now with people who are unhoused and people who are, who in another time might have just been put in jail are now in a position where they're able to make a different choice. And those choices are good. They're good for us because it means that if they make a choice to do something different, to learn to not commit crimes anymore, it reduces our costs. You know, if you just look at a benefit cost analysis, it reduces our costs of putting people in jail, of the, you know, paying for a public defender, of paying for prosecution, of paying for the subsequent jail time for a misdemeanor that could be up to a year. It, gross misdemeanor. It takes care of law enforcement going out and making contact with somebody potentially again and again, so it stops that cycle. So from a benefit cost analysis there, you've got to shift to helping people when people are willing to accept the help. But that benefit cost analysis doesn't get into the story. The picture that you showed there, that here you have a family, including a newborn, that are benefiting from their parent being there. And the council continues to make an investment in this, and this is one of the things that we're doing as part of the renovation at City Hall, is we're adding a therapeutic court there that is going to provide for a better facility to provide services. And I just, I think about how fortunate and how blessed we are that we have been able to develop these services when the time was there and necessary to develop those services. And tip of the arrow, you're the tip of the arrow. And we're just the backside, making certain that we can support you and the work that you're doing for our community. And from my heart to yours, thank you.
Well, I have a fabulous team. And then your support makes all the difference. I mean, it truly does. If I can add that, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
What the mayor was saying just kind of triggered something in me of what this program means to me, and that was the Ashley story with her newborn. My whole thing with this is stopping the cycle. And that was a really good picture and a story in stopping that cycle and actually improving things for the next generation. And a lot of times that doesn't just happen with incarceration or jail time. So there are times where that's appropriate, but I really like it that we are taking advantage of these times where it may not be so we can stop that cycle and continue on and have healthier generations to come. And of course, I say it all the time, thank you so much to you and your staff. I like the mayor said this, you are the tip of the spear. So yeah, this is something that we're all very brought up, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah, it was talked about, you know, that how we kind of look at the numbers. And I, you know, having been here 10 years ago, when this started, I mean, we've dissected this thing 16 different ways to Sunday. And as being on the finance chair for about 10 of those last 10 years, always something we constantly look at, but what has been, I think, lost is sometimes we just look at stuff in a microcosm. And when we look at the macro way that we've gone about this, the court is a huge part of our way of addressing our unhoused. It's, you know, whether it's an embedded social worker program, it's making sure that we staff, you know, appropriately at the police department. It's investing in a municipal court. And for all of us, different iterations of us over the last 10 years going through the education of what this service brings, you really start to understand the cost-benefit of analysis as opposed to just looking at it in a micro, you know, in a silo, in any one particular fiscal year, you got to look at it, you know, over the course of time. So I think it's been money well spent across the board. And then I also, you know, just echo the work that you and your staff has done and those before you. And then the work that has been done to secure these grants has just been, has been outstanding. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda this evening is council member reports, and I'm going to go ahead and pick on Councilmember Gamble.
I so wanted to give an ad report, but I had a question that came up that I just realized that I had not communicated. So the Monroe Public School Foundation Auction, it's online again this year, and it kicks off on the 15th, March 15th. For solos, a lot of folks up here have donated, but it's always a great cause, and all the proceeds for that go to support the Sky Valley Monroe School District teachers and students and use for a lot of it for scholarships and grants across the board. So it is their sole event for the year, so get on there. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. We decided that that was just so important. We're just going to end the meeting right there. Councilmember Folcher.
I was telling the mayor earlier that I did have a meeting today with CEO of Community Transit, Rick Ilgenfritz, talking about some potential stuff for the community and what transportation things and what we might need. Look forward to using my place as an alternate member of the Board of Directors to be a voice for the community for the next two years, and that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
I attended the SCT meeting last week, Steering Committee meeting, and there was a lot of information about sound transit and its eventual traveling north. Not much to report in terms of direct effects on Monroe, but still interesting. I did realize after last week's meeting, there was a pretty cool event here. It was a debate and public speech competition that I did not realize when I was first notified of it. It was actually a pretty big deal. It had incredible turnout, and it sounds like it's an annual thing. So I just wanted to give kudos to all of the young people that participated in it. Get a talented next generation, so it was just so cool to see. And obviously, want to welcome that group that puts it on and look forward to them coming back next year. Encourage everyone else to judge on it because it was just, it was awesome. It was a great day, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Nothing to report. With the exception of I'm still admiring our community. So they continue to be amazing, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough. Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
There we go. I got back Thursday night and attended the CAC meeting, which is our comp plan committee with Councilmember Hanford. So I'll let him maybe elaborate on that. And since Councilmember Jason Kevell commented on a public event, I'm going to do a little plug here for the Monroe Historical Society. Every spring, we have our annual meeting, and we elect new trustees and sort of tell the community what we're all about. And we have a great presentation on March 30th. It's at the Public Library. It's a Saturday. We're meeting at 3 o'clock, 3 to 5, and it's on historic inns and lakeside resorts such as Scenic Hot Springs Inn, which is no longer standing, Lake Rossiger, sort of how these all came to be. And Dexter Taylor, our local historian, is the presenter. So please come out. If you're not busy, it's really going to be interesting and you meet some cool people. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since Councilmember Beaumont would like me to tell about our meeting last Thursday, it was, you know, that committee is really, it's comprised of a great sprinkling of people from the community. Council members, Plan Commission Board members, EDAB committee members, the staff that were there, great and knowledgeable, and... And so, yeah, it was, it was really good. I really enjoy those meetings. They do, it is two hours of grueling going through the info, but it's definitely worth it. I like hearing from the other members due to their diversity mainly, so they all bring good perspective. I also was a judge for the first time at that speech and debate competition, and also neglected to bring it up last week too. So, but that was very interesting, and it was my first time, and I would do it again, definitely. I was very, I was very impressed. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go city administrator report extended agenda. Deborah.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, for next Tuesday's Legislative Committee meeting that will be canceled, as all the committee members will be in Washington, DC at the National League of Cities Conference. So the next slide will have a, just a, no, not yet, sorry. That was only meant to foreshadow the coming slide. But thank you for being right on top of it. Looking at the council regular business meeting for the 12th, we do have on the consent calendar the accounts payable, the meeting minutes payroll, and then the committee board commission work plans. That's actually going to be postponed to the next regular business meeting. The award bid and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with raw land construction for the Strawberry Water Main Replacement Phase II project, accepting the project and beginning the lean period for a water meter antenna project, accepting project and beginning the lean period for 177th sewer line replacement, and authorizing the purchase of the 179th Avenue Pump Station Generator, and then the Commerce Grant for the Municipal Campus Project for the Monroe Therapeutic Court. All about public works at that meeting. You can tell our public works staff are very busy this season. Under new business, we have the 2044 Comprehensive Plan Guiding Principles and renewing the Just Stop Resolution, and then department reports and mayor and administrator reports.
Any questions or comments or concerns? Go ahead, Councilmember Campbell. Okay. Okay. So we will be right at a quorum for the 12th, correct? No, that's next week. Wait, that is next week. Yes, that is next week. Sorry. We're this far into March already?
I know.
Jeez. It just marches on. Okay. So we're right at a quorum next week. And so if anybody thinks that they're not going to be able to make the meeting next week, please let us know ASAP. So just trying to figure out, so that'll be Gimble, Scarborough, Fulter, and Fisher. Okay, cool. So, yeah, just let us know as soon as you know if something happens and we need to affect a quorum. Thank you. And then we don't, to our recollection, usually have a motion to cancel the legislative, you know, the committee meetings, but if there's no objection, we'll just consider that meeting is canceled next week. Because we're down two members, right?
Hanford, Beaumont, and it says Walker. Yep. Oh, there was a typo.
So that's why we bring these things up. So we'll keep the Legislative Committee.
And we will update the slide.
Yeah, we'll update the slide.
For the next meeting.
Yeah. All right. So there being no objection, we will not cancel the meeting next week. All right, cool. Thank you very much. And then anything else on the administrative report extended agenda from the council?
There's one more slide for the upcoming meetings. There we go. So for the 19th, then, we have our financing, human resources, potential revenue options, so a continuing conversation from last month's meeting. And then for the study session, at this time, we don't have any items, so that may be canceled at the meeting on the 12th.
Any questions or concerns or comments from councilmembers on the excited? Okay, 7.2, City Administrator Report.
Excellent. So I have just a couple of items to bring to the council's attention regarding the state legislative session. So this is the last week of the session, so it ends March 7th. And they're spending this week, obviously reconciling and concurring with amendments, so things are kind of moving back and forth between the two houses. There are no more committee hearings, so committee hearings are over. It's only just floor action moving forward. And then I checked just before the meeting started, and at this point, there's no final budgets. They're expected to be released today, but nothing yet has shown up in the news anyway related to those. Some interesting advancements around the initiatives. So three of the initiatives the legislature took action on earlier in the week. So Initiative 2111 would prohibit Washington State and its local governments from imposing taxes on personal income. So that action took place earlier this week. And then Initiative 2081, which was the Parents' Bill of Rights, that also passed. And then Police Pursuits, Initiative 2113. So Police Pursuit, some of those options have been restored to local police departments. The three other initiatives, the legislature has said they won't be acting on those. So those include repealing the state's capital gains tax, repealing the carbon market, and making the payroll tax to pay for state long-term care insurance program optional. Those will be headed to voters in November.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Other bills that did pass, that did not make final cuts, were the unemployment benefits for striking workers. So that did not pass. And the other one that did not pass this week was consolidating planning requirements and other changes specifically for Puget Sound Energy to transition away from natural gas. The other one that came to my attention, which is kind of an odd one, was banning octopus farming. Currently, there are no octopus farms in Washington State, but the legislature took action on that as well. Tax increment financing options, those have been amended and are heading back and forth between state and house. So that bill is still alive and remains to be seen whether or not the House will accept the amendments that the Senate made. And then one that we've been watching really closely is a match grant for federal grants. So we have a number of federal requests in, and it would be, it would be great if we could have some matching money from the state. That also had some amendments made to it in the Senate and is headed back to the House. So more updates when I am back in front of council about the things that actually made it through the final couple of days of this legislative session. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, comments, good jokes? All right. Next item, just the Monroe this week is there in your newsletter for your reference. This is Women's History Month. We also have International Women's Day. You'll see a proclamation in there just reflecting on it being Women's History Month and International Women's Day. We have a number of people who are named in the proclamation. So councilmembers Fulter and Beaumont, Judge Ness, Deborah Knight, Becky, and other people. And we have a number of folks that are leaders in our community and that do all sorts of work and service for our community. And I thank everybody for that work. And just, it's a good time to learn and focus just on women's history and present as well. So, thank you. Couple other items, I, for the last week and a half or so, I've been engaging with our directors and city administrator on discussions just around the budget for the next biennium. So just, you know, for your awareness, we sometimes have these conversations early in the year, and this is our first next biennium budget. We're just starting those conversations now. The staff will end up sending out budget instructions right around June 1st, so, you know, we're a couple months away from that. But just started those conversations with the staff. Also, I interviewed somebody, a company for a federal lobbyist on Friday morning last week. I think we're going to be proceeding with that contract. I was impressed with them, and it may be that our folks who are going out to DC next week, next week, not this week, right? Actually, this Saturday, right?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay. That is next week, depending upon when you start the week, Sunday or Monday. Yeah, so hopefully you'll have a chance to meet them in person even before the contract is brought before the council for consideration. I was impressed with how they seem to present as very objective. As you're aware, for me, nonpartisan is pretty important, and even though they've got sort of partisan backgrounds, they presented in a very nonpartisan way, which I appreciated. And they come with experience from different states also, so it's not just state of Washington. And sometimes that's useful to leverage and advocate with other people that are from other states that, just like you see when we go down to Olympia, sometimes we meet with people who are not our representatives because they're chairs of committees and things like that. So those relationships are important, even if they don't represent us. All right. I think that that's all I have to report for that this evening. Any questions, comments, or good jokes from me? Okay, he's thinking about it. All right. You're looking up good jokes. All right. We're going to move on to discussion items. We're going to start off with 8.1, the 2044 Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element, Multimodal Level of Services Standards Requirement with Director Roberts. And we're going to bring the table forward so he doesn't have to stand awkwardly behind a podium with a couple people.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, Patrick Lynch and Paul Sharman from Transportation, well, wait, Transpho Group. PSI is back there. They're next. In any case, some of the best and brightest minds in transportation are here tonight to present to the council something that I can't describe. They're far more intelligent than I am, and so I will let them take it away. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, members of the council, city administrator Knight. We're here to discuss multimodal level of service. I don't want to drop this, my, oh. And so on the Zoom call is my colleague, Paul Sharman, and we're going to run you through a series of slides that will discuss some of the work we've been doing regarding developing a multimodal level of service standard for the city as part of our work on the comprehensive plan. So level of service standards have been in kind of part of transportation planning for a long time. What's new is the requirement to make these standards multimodal, meaning to encompass more than just the auto mode, to include pedestrians, bicycles, and transit as part of how we measure success of the transportation system. And so what we're going to run through are kind of why we're doing this, what standards are related to level of service, what are we proposing for Monroe? We'll discuss how we got to this point, and we'll kind of draw some contrast for comparing it to what we do now. So the primary reason we're going through this is it's a requirement now of the Growth Management Act is kind of, it's a requirement that we must adopt multimodal level service standards as part of our transportation element in the comprehensive plan. And so before, it was more of a best practice, and there were some jurisdictions in the state that had adopted multimodal level service standards kind of before it was a requirement. But now, all agencies that are going through this latest update of their comp plans are also going through the same thing that we're going through with you guys. PSRC also recommends, or is requiring it as part of their certification process of their, of the transportation element. And so really what we're talking about in terms of multimodal is sort of a paradigm shift in how we think of prioritizing mobility for the different users of the transportation system. And here, you can kind of see with the graphic on the right, kind of this inverted pyramid where we're prioritizing the most vulnerable users and really, you know, related to safety and mobility, and putting things in balance. So it's not that we're not addressing or focused on the vehicular movement, it's that we're balancing them with the other modes that are using the system. Next slide. And so again, PSRC, as part of their Vision 2050 Regional Transportation Plan, also is calling for cities within the region to adopt multimodal level service standards. And so with this, there is not one way of doing it. There is the ability to tailor these standards to what fits the community best. And so like, that's one of the things that I think, as we go through our presentation, we went through a series of different options, and working with staff, kind of landed on a few different options, and we'll talk about some of the ones that we ended up kind of bringing before you now. Next slide.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I got a thumbs up. Great. Okay, so thanks for having me. So basically, I mean, we're talking about updating your level of service standard to be multimodal, but let's kind of zoom back a little bit and talk, you know, what is level of service? So we can jump to the next slide. At its most basic, level of service is a measure of transportation system performance. Right now, it's often graded on a letter grade from A to F, where a level of service A is smooth sailing, vehicles are flowing, no delays. And level service F is obviously the opposite end of the spectrum, where what we call force flow or jammed, where, you know, the roadway is at capacity, people are waiting in line, nobody's happy. Historically, this has been measured at intersection in terms of vehicle delay traveling through an intersection. And so based on how long it takes people on average to get through the intersection, we assign a level of service to that. And this is typically measured during the PM peak period or PM peak hour. It's kind of the busiest hour of the day. So a lot of the planning work has historically been done during the busiest time of the year, or the busiest time of the day, so that, you know, the roadways we build, the intersections we build are really built for that, that worst part of the day. And hop to the next slide. Oh, and I should say, please interrupt me at any time if anybody has questions. I'm happy to take them. Okay, great. So, right now, in the city of Monroe, we're showing a map here on the left of the functional classification of your roadways. And functional classification is intended to kind of say what the roadway is intended for. So a principal arterial kind of prioritizes vehicle throughput, and those are kind of the state facilities, the Washout facilities, US 2, 532, and 203. Those are under Washout jurisdiction, so they set the level of service standard for those roadways, even though they are within your city. And then you also have a series of minor arterials. Those are shown in orange, which have a little bit more of an emphasis on accessibility versus vehicle throughput, and then collector roadways in, shown in pink or purple there. Those are, you know, more about access, speeds are typically lower as well. And so right now, Monroe's level of service standard is based on the functional classification. So arterials are set at level of service D, and collectors and local roadways are set at level of service C. So your existing level of service standard is based on vehicular level of service at intersections. So there is no standard for ped bike or transit, but as Patrick mentioned, that is required as part of this comprehensive plan update that we are undertaking right now. Next slide.
Let's hold off when we go back to the previous slide. So I just want to note, if we're going to be using this map, that there appears to be an error.
Oh.
191st at the roundabout where Chain Lake is. So, you see that, Jacob?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so we just want to make certain that we, we make that adjustment, that that road's not there.
Go ahead. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
It's a great idea, though. I'd like to, so, all right, go ahead, Paul. All right, go ahead, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as part of this comp plan update that we're working on right now, one of the things we go out and do at the start of this is collect transportation data or traffic data to understand what the existing level of service is at the intersections across the city. So we're showing a map here of the letter grades at all the intersections where we collected data all the way back in June 2022. But the data shows us that currently none of the intersections within the city are exceeding their level of service standards. So everything is operating at or above standard. Next slide. Okay, so that's where we are. And now where are we proposing to go? So next slide. The system that, or the standard that we have come up with or proposed standard, working with staff, would be to shift to an arterial and collector vehicle travel time metric. So instead of measuring delay at intersections, we would measure travel time along a corridor. And the benefits of this is that it's a lot easier to explain to people. It's a measure of that real world experience and people are very familiar with this now from using Google Maps to get around. Oh, it's green on the corridor. It's smooth. Everybody can get around, no delay. Yellow, okay, a little bit of delay. Orange, more delay. Red, things are jammed up and it's going to take me a while. I might need to take a different route, kind of thing. So we're proposing that system and then kind of bolting on a pedestrian and bicycle system build out. And that would be a measure of the pedestrian and bicycle networks within the city, measuring their level of build out versus what is laid out in the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan will lay out the ultimate vision for the pedestrian bicycle system across the city. And we will measure level of service of the existing facilities against kind of that ultimate vision and assign letter grades that way. So what does this mean for Monroe? Next slide, please. So we have on the right a map showing all the potential roadways that would fall under the jurisdiction of this new travel time based system. And so we're highlighting 154th here. And what we're showing on the left is average travel speed across the day in the light blue and dark blue lines. I know there's a lot going on on this chart, but I'll try to explain it. So the light blue line that goes, you know, across the top is showing the average vehicle speed for eastbound vehicles across the day. So all the way on the left, we're looking at five in the morning. All the way on the right, we're looking at 10 at night. And so you see the speeds kind of, you know, wiggle up and down a mile an hour or two across the day, but generally not a lot of delay here. Then we have a series of dashed lines down below that that indicate what level of service standards, what a level of service A means in terms of travel time, what a level of service B means in terms of travel time and C. C is where your standard is right now. So we have drawn a line between the existing speeds and what the level of service standard would hold you to now. So essentially, vehicle speeds could drop about 10 miles an hour before you would hit your level of service standard right now. So this one is operating fairly well. Any questions on that?
Go ahead.
Okay, next slide.
Just a second. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
So on that slide, Slide nine basically indicates that the traffic counts were done in June of 2022.
Yes.
So this 154th slide, you're saying that's currently at level C. Is that based on 2022 or is that more current?
It's a great question. That's something I meant to mention. So what we're showing here, this is travel time data. So this was actually captured from, in fall 2023, so a little bit, a little bit more recent. We took a three-month average of travel speeds along the roadway corridor as a sample here to show what the existing speed values are. But the intersection-based counts that determine the intersection-based level of service standard, that was done back in June 2022.
So maybe just a quick point of contrast between those two methods. What was one of the advantages of travel time? And because the source for that travel time is there are data vendors that kind of synthesize this data or kind of pull it together from like cell phones, navigation systems. It's what Google uses. There's other vendors out there that use this data. And it's, we're able to kind of average over a period of time. Whereas these intersection counts, it's that singular day and that month. And there, you know, there's seasonal variation in data. There could be, you know, when we get the count, it's difficult to account for if there was construction that day adjacent corridors or if there was an event that day. Whereas this data, those things kind of get averaged out because it's a, it's a larger set of information that is creating those lines. So that is one distinction between the two ways of kind of calculating this. I think there's more questions, so.
Yep. And Councilmember Beaumont, I may have missed it, but did you indicate that this was level of service C? The map, the graph that's showing up on the screen right now shows that that 154th is level of service A.
The standard is C.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough, and then Councilmember Walker. So maybe, go ahead.
Yes. Councilmember Scarborough, I think you're just a little bit ahead of where we are here. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Patrick. Just a little bit ahead of where we are here. The level of service component isn't directly related to traffic calming. There certainly is crossover in the data, absolutely. However, our next presentation will actually speak directly to some of the questions you just asked, so.
In terms of part of the underlying question that he had, the data on here is not showing somebody in the sample set. There's not a data point that shows like 50 miles an hour, and that's because these are averages?
That's correct, yes. So the 85th percentile and the average are a little bit different. And so you're going to see some data that looks different, however, it's measuring at a different level. Does that make sense?
So people may have legitimate complaints that someone's doing 60 out there. It's just not going to show in the data because it's an average at that. Makes sense. It's not showing the highs and lows. It's showing the average. Well, yeah, if someone's doing 100. There you go. That's right. So that's the next conversation, though. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
The 2022 data that you said was more of like a singular count, that was all over town. How was that, was that gathered? Was that through the same integrated like vehicle systems and apps?
No, those are physical counts. So they're, it's, they use cameras and then they count, you know, they record the intersection and then count each movement that's occurring at the intersection.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Walker? So I'll just, I'll just ask the sort of the simple question. Since the data was collected in 2022, when we were coming out of a time where people weren't driving as much, is that going to have, does that inform any concerns we should have here with applying this to level of service?
No, I mean, those were, I think, when we collected those counts, we were just getting started with the project and we were updating the existing conditions part of the transportation element. So, yeah, I'm going to let Jacob.
Good question, Mayor. School was back in session when we collected those counts and we made sure that school was back in session. So I think we were maybe not back to 100% of what the new normal is, but we were awfully close.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on this slide or the presentation so far before we continue? All right, Paul, go ahead.
Thank you. One thing to note, that it is a little bit hard for me to hear the questions. So if there's one directed to me and I don't respond, if someone could ping me, that would be great.
Thank you. We'll make certain that we're talking into the microphones.
Thank you. So one more example corridor here. So we're looking at Main Street here. You can see on the map on the bottom right. So all the way from some 532 all the way up to US 2. And you'll notice the light blue and dark blue lines that starting all the way over at the left, kind of between 20 and 25. These ones vary a lot more. So there's, you know, see a dip in travel speeds in the morning around 7, 7:15. Usually people taking their kids to school or driving to work. Then you see a big dip in the afternoon there as well, in the 3 o'clock window, probably again. I know there are a couple of schools on that corridor, so pick up and drop off time. You see the travel speeds decrease. So there is a little bit of a narrower band of available capacity here, noting that the level of service is just above the threshold for B. So it is still operating at a level of service B, which is considered perfectly reasonable and operating well. But there is a little bit less capacity on this roadway when compared to 154th. And that's probably not a surprise to anybody. Okay, next slide. So then the other component of this system is measuring pedestrian and bicycle system completeness. And I realize this is a lot to look at, but the map on the left is showing a map of the existing pedestrian and bicycle facilities across the city. So the yellow orangy color is showing a map of all the existing sidewalks within the city. And the green are showing bike lanes. What we are doing as part of this comprehensive plan update is building the map on the right, which is the ultimate planned vision for the pedestrian and bicycle network. Doing this, we are identifying primary and secondary on-street and off-street systems. So the primary on-street network on the right is in dark blue. And that is a network where, which would serve a little bit more like an arterial, but for pedestrians and bicycles. So we would expect higher volumes of pedestrian and bicycles on those roadways in dark blue. And we would thus need to provide a higher level of infrastructure for those pedestrians and bicycles. And it doesn't look the same across all the different corridors, but we would, throughout this process, identify a level of service standard based on the physical environment for those. So for example, for sidewalks for pedestrians, on a primary corridor, we would probably set the level of service standard for pedestrians being to a sidewalk on each side of the street. So any sidewalk that doesn't have a sidewalk on both sides of the street on those primary corridors would be considered level of service deficient in the pedestrian system. In contrast, on a secondary system, we might say a sidewalk on one side of the street is sufficient. There are lower pedestrian and bicycle volumes. And so a sidewalk on one side of the street might be adequate to accommodate those volumes.
Any questions or comments on this one? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
And we will speak into the microphones.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you please clarify the dark blue? I understand it's on-street primary, but is that meaning that both pedestrian and bike would be on those? I'm just not quite clear on.
Yeah, that's a great question. That's something I should have mentioned. Yes, this is, this is the planned pedestrian and bicycle network. Typically, we would expect roadways with high pedestrian volumes to likely have high bicycle volumes as well. That's not always the case. Off-street systems are a little different. But on-street systems, we typically expect to have high levels of walkers and bikers like within the vicinity of a park or within, you know, the vicinity of a school or just a, you know, a downtown travel corridor where there's lots of folks out walking and biking. So yes, the dark blue and the light blue, as well as the dark brown and light brown, is reflective of both pedestrian and bicycle system.
So the, if I'm understanding correctly, the dark blue on-street primary from, say, Main Street, from Highway, from Franklin's Boulevard all the way to Highway 2 and across on Main Street. The plan is to have both bicycle lanes and sidewalks all the way across?
It would be to have some, some adequate pedestrian and bicycle facility that could safely accommodate users. So there, it wouldn't necessarily mean bike lanes. You could theoretically widen one of the sidewalks to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists on a shared use path, something like that. It would mean different things in different corridors, but there would have to be some established level of pedestrian or bicycle system infrastructure on those roadways.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, because I know we just redid downtown on Main Street several years ago. And I just can't. I'm trying to envision a bike lane through there, so I'm not quite sure how it'll look, but.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good comment. And I should say the, the map on the right is still in draft. This isn't finalized. Part of our process, we're going to be updating this, but this is kind of the draft of where we're at today.
Oh, question for you. If you've got a road that's got low volume, low speed, are you able to accommodate the bicycles within the travel lane as opposed to having to have a dedicated lane and count that as multimodal?
Absolutely, yeah. A lot of those on-street secondary systems for bicyclists would probably be a shared roadway. So with a share, or the bike would share the roadway with the, with the vehicles without needing a dedicated facility.
So to Kevin's, to Kevin's point, you wouldn't necessarily need to widen it out or take additional property. One, one question that I have. North side of Highway 2, from what I know is the foothills, which is on the west side of the map over to the light blue on the easterly side of the map. We've talked about trying to install a bike, ped network within the Route 2 bypass right of way. Is that something that would be appropriate to consider at this time? I know that we've been talking about the trail plan and just wanted to see if that's something that we should include as now.
Well, so just to, I think, reiterate what Paul said earlier, this is a draft map. It has not been fully reviewed. It's conceptual at this point. I think the answer to that is yes. However, it will be included in the trails plan. And Patrick's group and the Trails Plan Group have actually been working very closely to collaborate on this so that we come out the end with a map that will be in both places, but will be the same.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this one? All right, Paul, go ahead. Thank you.
I think I'm going to kick it back to Patrick, actually.
Yeah, so I just want to kind of mention with the ped and bike systems, level of service, really what we're measuring are the connected networks that we have planned in the comprehensive plan. And the projects that come out of that are those gap projects. And so that's kind of, it's a simple way of assessing levels of service for ped and bike, but it's really effective and it's probably the most meaningful thing about getting people to actually walk and bike is making sure we have a connected network that gets them where they want to go. And so more, more to come on this. This won't be the last time you see it. So we'll, we'll have more to share. And so we want to give a couple bullets on the next steps. So we want to kind of do a little more work on the multimodal level of service and then finalize kind of our methodology and then incorporate that into the development of the Transportation Systems Plan and the project list, ultimately into the transportation element. And following that, we'll use the standard to develop a transportation concurrency program that will be part of your development review. So that is, you know, development applications come in, they'll run through the transportation concurrency and receive their certificate of concurrency and continue with the development review. So that will be, once we're through the transportation element, first we'll get First, we'll get the standard in place.
With that. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher, and then Councilmember Beaumont.
There we go. I was going to wait until the whole presentation was done. I think that it's kind of wrapping up maybe. And just to kind of go back through some stuff, notice in the packet, it said that our acceptable LOS was a D. I see all of our stuff on here is a C or better. There's only one C and things are other things are Bs and As, two Cs. And what everybody's reaction is it being at a D? So I don't think that the letter grade D is a very good one. And since we're above D, and I know that it comes with other things as far as like how we can develop and how much capacity we have. So I have some questions about how everybody feels about the, the, the standard of D being or the letter D being our standard. And the other thing is just the frustration of there. I don't think we have a lot of traffic problems. I think our traffic problems are are because of the state with 203, 522 and Highway two. So that part's really frustrating. I think we do a really good job as a state or as a city with all of our streets and our pedestrian access. We're constantly working on it, but we are continually hamstrung by the state when it comes to these things. What was one of the maps it was on here? Probably that one, the whole bike pedestrian thing. Like I have full confidence that we as a city can accomplish all those things, but we can't do it without the state. And I guess I'm just going to bring it up because it's a bone of contention for me. It drives me crazy because they're like more jobs, more homes. But they refuse to improve the three highways that we have coming through our city. So that's one of my just little soapbox things. But what do people think about the D? I feel like we should at least be at a C since all of our roads are there right now.
All right, I'm, I think. Well, so, yeah, that's, you know, it's one of the unfortunate things with the level service standards is how they've kind of equated them to letter grades that you would receive in school. But I don't think that's the right way to think about it. Because really, if you think it's kind of the, it's the efficiency of the system is really what we're after, right? So often like a higher letter grade would require us to overbuild, right? Because especially what Paul was kind of showing in some of those graphs, really what we're mitigating is kind of the, kind of the the highest peaks, right? And so there, you know, with a higher standard comes more infrastructure to accommodate that standard once growth is occurring in the city. And that would require larger intersections, wider corridors, just to accommodate the, the kind of the PMP cower or the AMP or whenever it is we're measuring level service. So that's, it's kind of a financial question of, you know, do we want to mitigate a level service? See when throughout the day, traffic is adequate, if not for, you know, the, the 15 to 20 minutes during the peak, when it maybe is dipping to or below standard. Deborah, have you had other thoughts?
I, I would add that just practically speaking, what happens if you want to adopt a higher level of service is that the total cost of your transportation program, so what's required to be mitigated, is mitigated by developers. So as new development comes into the community, each one of those homes adds a new trip to the existing roadway system. And so when you go to calculate your transportation impact fee, that transportation impact fee, you take the number of trips and you divide that number of trips into the total cost of your system improvements. If you have a level of service A, that is a much more expensive capital investment, as Patrick was saying, right? Because you're overbuilding your intersection to handle just your peak traffic, your AM or your PM peak. And so what that means practically then for your developers is that their cost of their transportation impact fees increases significantly to the point where they come to the city council and they say, we can't build, right? Because your impact fees are prohibitively expensive, in part because you adopted this very high level of service. It also means too, that in some situations, that the level of service is so high that you can't build your way out of it and you have to stop development. So there have been communities within Washington State that use an excessively high level of service in order to prohibit development. So your level of service standard, most communities have found, you know, practically since the Growth Management Act was passed back in the 1990s, that some of them started with very high levels of service in their first comprehensive plans. And over time, what they've discovered is they really need to lower their level of service. Many have a level of service of CE, you know, FD, you know, they go all the way down to the bottom because what they want to be able to do is to be able to allow development to continue to occur in the community, right? While trying to figure out how to mitigate, you know, and and improve traffic flow over time. So you can certainly adopt a higher level of standard. I wouldn't recommend it from a practical perspective because, as Patrick was saying, you can't build your way out of it and the development community can't afford it. I would also just add practically speaking that typically what's going to happen is staff will come back to you with a, you know, level of service standard, the capital investments needed to meet that level of service standard and a traffic impact fee that you will have to charge developers in order for them to pay their proportionate share. And what you're going to find is is that that number is going to be too high and that there's no requirement for you to adopt the level of service, the, the impact fee to meet that level of service. Every council I have ever worked for just artificially lowers that amount to be something consistent with what the communities around you are doing, right? You, you have to somehow stay in this band that allows development to continue while at the same time collecting enough revenue in order to be able to practically do projects. So those are kind of the realities of a traffic impact fee system. I would add that this is the first time I've ever seen a multimodal because it's a, a new requirement. So it's something I think that, you know, all communities around Washington State, I'm imagining that are in this first round of having to do these updates, are trying to figure out how to solve this problem. And I think having worked with Transpo for the last 30 years, they're probably the best in the business to help us figure out how to do that. So this will be the first time the council takes a look at this, but in 10 years, you're going to have to come back and fine tune it again. It took us three tries to get the intersection level of service correct. And it's probably going to take at least that much in order to get the multimodal. And by that time, there'll be some new standard as well. So I, it's a long way of saying I, I would not recommend lowering your current levels of service for the reasons that I stated earlier.
Thank you. And Jacob, can I just, or whomever, can I just ask a follow up also that? And then of course, hear from you as well on, on his question. But the, does growth pay 100% of the cost of the transportation improvements?
Say, say again.
Who pays, who pays for the transportation improvements? Does, does, does growth pay for that? Or how does that, does that affect the city?
They, growth pays for the growth share of those transportation improvements.
So the city would pay for the balance of that?
Right, yes.
Thank you. Jacob?
I mean, it depends. I mean, so like the question was like, what, what's the typical percent of growth share or whatever? It's different in different parts of the city, right? So there's going to be, you know, there, the model will help us develop the growth share that we count that is an input for the calculation of the impact fee program. So it's like in places where there's more growth, there's going to be a higher percent of, you know, the growth share on, on certain track improvement projects than in other places. So basically, it's places where there are existing deficiencies. Those are things that the city is responsible for. The, what gets calculated in the impact fee is the growth portion of the project divided by the number of growth trips.
And so if the, if a high LOS is, is selected and growth in a particular situation might pay 80% or 75%.
Right, something like that.
This city would end up picking up the balance of it.
The 20% or whatever.
That LOS standard.
Yeah.
Jacob, and then we'll go back to Councilmember Fisher.
I just wanted to add that since Administrator Knight let the cat out of the bag about the fees, council will have an opportunity to look at the fees in relation to the projects that will come out of the comprehensive capital facilities plan for this time around. And I think Patrick mentioned this, it may not have been bright line clear. We'll adopt the con plan and then Transpo will be with us coming back with the development of those fees and things. And that'll be in early 2025, at the earliest late 2024.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, anything further?
No, that's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you. And I think it was the city of Sammamish that had like an LOS of like a B or something, which completely stalled out all growth. Part of it is, what's that? Oh, was it? Okay. And so part of it, bringing this conversation up is just maybe different ways of trying to apply some pressure to get our state highways fixed and widened and all of those things. And so, yeah, I appreciate all the explanation. It's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gimmel, you're, you've got your flag. Did you want to say so? Okay. Anybody else with, oh, Councilmember Beaumont, that's right. Thank you.
So first of all, I just want to thank you for the presentation. I think most of you on council know that I've had a lot of people contact me about pedestrian bicycle safety. And it's just wonderful that we're looking at this. I know we're required to look at it, but this map just makes me so happy because that's one of our, our goals as a city is to make this a more walkable, bikeable city and get people out of their cars. And so I'm just happy to see the progress being made on it. I know it's a lot of work and I think you're all doing a great job. And it just makes me happy to be able to tell people in the community that ask, we're working on it. And in another few years, hopefully some of these things are going to be developed and we're just going to have a more bikeable, walkable city. And that's what we all want. And just want to thank you and just made me really happy because I can talk about this to people when they ask and say we're working on it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you guys as well for the, the presentation. I was just going to kind of echo Councilmember Fisher's point about infrastructure development as it relates to the state, but, but also kind of the, the burden that we have as well as a city to invest in our infrastructure. Spoke to many people in the fall and I think it is a lot more top of mind for a lot of residents than we might think. Think that some of the data on here might, might give the, the wrong impression in the fact that just because traffic peaks during rush hour and it's not that bad throughout 90% of the day, if we apply that same reasoning to 522 and the bottlenecks on 522, then that doesn't need that much improvement either. And obviously, by that, I mean, it still needs to be improved. And I think we can still do a better job improving Monroe's traffic infrastructure. So I just, I wanted to voice that concern. I don't know if that requires a survey or something to, to validate, but I, I think it is something to, to keep the top of mind. So I'm looking forward to the impact fee discussion, coming back and just kind of, kind of figuring out what other levers we might have at the city's disposal to, to help offset that infrastructure cost. Just wanted to echo that to the rest of the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Gimmel?
Yeah, I appreciate the data has no feelings. I like the charts that show because you'd be able to address, you know, some of the, the feedback that you get by looking at the actual data that shows you. I mean, even the peaks of bad traffic, right? There's most cities that would give their left arm for the results that we have there. So very happy to see that. I totally get, we actually had this conversation, I want to say, I'm trying to remember, Councilmember Hanford, maybe you can remember, because we asked that question and we wanted to have some sort of number of what it would look like if we wanted to go to a, a B. Maybe you can remember, Jacob. And it was ungodly. And, you know, and the other piece of that is that at that particular point in time, we didn't even have any sort of funded mechanism. We didn't have transportation benefit district. We didn't have a lot of stuff that we put into, into place. And so when I look at like our six year strategy, all the different things that we have in, in front of us, I'm very happy with the level of service that we have, you know, selected that, you know, currently, it's good to see the data to back up that we're still well within and we've got that buffer. And I don't think we're anywhere near a 522 as of right now, you know, those, you know, those, those peaks, but no, it's great. I think it's good and we'll move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
I just need to clarify that point. We are nowhere near as bad as 522. I brought it up to say that during peak hours of congestion, just because the rest of the day doesn't have traffic, doesn't mean there's not a traffic problem. So thank you for saying that. Yep. Sad to hear.
Councilmember Gimmel?
Yeah, I, we don't have a traffic problem per se, is what I'm trying to, trying to get at. We do have a traffic problem on 522, 100%. But our, our peak that we have here is not a traffic problem. Yeah, it may be a little bit of an inconvenience and the bigger issue is the trains. I mean, if this doesn't factor in trains, if you factor in the trains on this, that is a lot of what you have to see going on, on the new way that we're measuring stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to the continued conversation. All right. Item on the agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next item on the agenda is item 8.2, traffic calming policy draft review, discussion of proposed policy document with Derek Hahn. Hahn, thank you. Good evening.
Hello, council, Mayor. Thank you for having me. My name is Derek Hahn. I am one of the capital improvement engineers with the city. I've been with the city about a year and a half now. One of the first projects that came across my desk, we've been working on this about a year now, is traffic calming for the city. This will be the fourth presentation I've done with Victor. This is Victor Salman. He is, he's with TSI. He's a wealth of knowledge on this. He's really easy to talk to. He knows his stuff. He's clearly been doing this for a long time. I, he's very, 40 years, yeah. He's really good at feedback, really good at questions. I'd encourage you to engage with him as much as possible. We've, I think we've refined this to a really good policy and I'm excited to present this and interact with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Don't usually get one like that. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, I'm going to go through what we did together as a team, looking at this, as Councilmember Scarborough mentioned, kind of the other side of travel time and how important it is to people. And sometimes they get a little too concerned about it and go a little too fast. So there is an issue with the other end of that speed spectrum is people get frustrated when they're going very slow. The drivers don't typically get frustrated when they're going faster than others would like, but the people adjacent to them, the pedestrians, the cyclists, and even people in other cars are sitting in their living room, do get concerned. So this is what, this is addressing that other end of the spectrum, what happens when the speeds are higher than desired. So the recommendations were a result of looking at your current policy and trying to make some improvements, clarify what is a traffic calming device, what isn't, what is a strategy, how you would go about implementing them and who would implement them. And so this is kind of how the, the plan would move ahead. Next slide. So in our project, there is a rather lengthy, lengthy report attached to your agenda bill. We won't go through all of it. We looked at your existing policy and those requirements, reviewed existing speed data, which we'll take a look at. Our, the source we used was TomTomGo data. It is one of those navigation machine trackers. We did two public surveys, one initially that TSI did, and then the staff followed up with a second one after the B3 committee meeting. You guys asked for a little more data, so the city staff went ahead and got some. Looking at the historical context for your program, also the staff asked that we look at a, some peer agencies and kind of compare their policies, their experiences, those that have been doing traffic calming a little longer. So we did that as well. There's a matrix in the report that kind of compares your policy with those other policies. And then the report provides some recommendations that were then, kind of streamlined, kind of the best of those were taken by staff as recommendations to you folks. Next slide. So just the definition of traffic calming is actually changed over the years. Its intent is to reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use on those other users of the roadway of the street, primarily non-motorized users. The goal is to alter driver behavior to make sure that we create a safe environment for all users. And that really to reduce the risk of injury and death is our really, really our primary goal. And then your City of Monroe current traffic program goal is completely consistent with that. Again, maintain safe and pleasant streets to enhance the livability of neighborhoods in the City of Monroe by encouraging people to drive within the law. And so that really means adjust, following the speed limit. So here's your current program. One of the commonalities is that you do start with education. You do then get input to prioritize where you might look at those locations, certain amount of traffic speeding experience. And then having of traffic speeding experience, um, and then having, um, a group or neighborhood all agree that something needs to be done. And then looking at public works to present, um, process those. Next slide. So again, your current policy does, really focuses on informing drivers rather than controlling them. There's very little, um, opportunity for physically changing their behavior. Um, does not include the installation of stop signs, which is, is actually typically stop signs are not a traffic control measure. Or sorry, they are traffic control, they're not traffic calming. You have to be very careful about what you put stop sign, where they put them. Uh, there are some specific restrictions on how you use them. Um, and then you have a, a comment in the current plan, no restrictions that create new problems. Um, so right now raised surfaces and curbs or redirection of vehicles is not allowed. Um, and then subject to available funding and then only on local or collector streets, not on your arterials. Next slide. So we thought, well, let's figure out, um, how big a problem there is. It was kind of spurred, this was spurred on some neighborhood specific complaints, um, but we looked at this data, um, kind of there's some, um, information there on, we looked at really the low speed streets. So those streets that were posted at 25 miles an hour. Um, we covered 33% of all the street segments in the city because we wanted to make sure we had enough observations. So we only are presenting data for where we had over a hundred observations in that one month period. Um, the results aren't directional in the maps I'm going to show you. It's the bidirectional travel speed. Um, and then what we'd say is phase two eligible areas that would be eligible for some sort of treatment would have those seven miles an hour or over for the posted speed. Uh, so let's go to the next one. So this is color coded. There we go. And we talked about that 85th percentile speed. So that means, uh, in this case, um, 15% of the vehicles are going faster than either seven to 10 miles an hour over the speed limit in yellow and in orange 10 to 15. And then the, the darker maroon color, reddish color, that's where 15% of the vehicles are going, um, over 15 miles an hour over the posted speed. So that means in a 25 mile an hour speed zone, out of a hundred cars that went by, 15 of them were going 40 out of 25. So that's pretty significant if you live on that 25 mile hours facility. And so there's going to be a pattern that comes out of this. So let's go to the next slide. If you do have questions, feel free to stop me anywhere. Um, this is just kind of to correlate uh, traffic volumes. Uh, so a lot of our, this type of neighborhood speeding is actually occurring on the lower volume roads where it generates a concern. Um, a lot of people aren't concerned about someone going 10 miles and over if they can on 522. Uh, if they can go 60 instead of 50, that's almost considered okay on that facility, not okay in a residential neighborhood. Next slide. So we found several patterns. Um, one place, uh, which is fairly common where speeding occurs, our residential neighborhoods. Um, and it's typically on those roads that are longer, straighter, or accessing a residential neighborhood where there's not a bunch of activity along the edges of the street, that kind of the, the feel or the perception of what's going on along the edge of a road has a very high influence on how a driver drives that street. So the, kind of the less friction there is, the faster vehicles tend to go. So you can, these are some pictures, um, of some of those locations where we observed that speeding. Next slide. And then this is again, a similar treatment in some of the commercial or mixed use or industrial areas again, where, where there's in some cases too much road or again, very little activity along the edges of the road. So this is actually, um, you, we're talking about the potential for, you know, picking a high level of service standard and overbuilding. So then during those off peaks, you have a lot of excess capacity which can induce speeding. It's, it's easy to go faster. There's a whole extra lane in these pictures that you can see that in some of them. Uh, let's do the next slide. This was kind of an interesting one that popped up was the, what we call transitional roadway. So those areas, um, at the edges of the city, at the city limits where we have a rural roadway, relatively high speed might be posted at 45 that is then transitioning into a residential area. Um, and those drivers take a while to slow down. Uh, so these are three sites where that was happening. So here's our first public survey. Uh, we got 112 comments, 60% of those being by city residents. It was a, um, a survey monkey, um, online survey. So anyone could respond. Um, a high proportion were not familiar with your existing traffic calming policy. That's not a surprise. Typically, it's only people that have specific concerns that will dig into your website and find your policy, which they can pretty easily. Um, but 67% of those respondents supported more restrictive traffic calming measures than you're currently using. Um, equal support before we asked a question about would you be, um, okay with automated speed cameras in school zones in particular? Because that is legal currently now for cities to implement. Um, that had a kind of 50/50 support. Speeding and pedestrian bike safety were two top issues. So that relates back to your multimodal level of service is that level of services also for, for the pedestrian and bicyclist perspective of level services really directly related to the volume and speed of the vehicles close to them. So, um, you can actually influence a pedestrian's, um, perception of level of service simply by managing and keeping the speeds adjacent to those pedestrians lower. Just imagine walking along 522 with vehicles going 70 miles an hour, four feet away from you versus walking on Main Street where there's a row of parked cars and you're insulated from those moving vehicles and they're going 25. So, um, speed can have a very negative effect on the, on the perception and reality of, um, alternative modes. And then, um, there were some specific locations about sort of wanting traffic calming on some of your arterial streets, um, which is a different issue. It's more of a arterial and, um, community design issue, a little different than neighborhood traffic calming, but it's something that came up in the survey. And then staff did the second survey. I think that's the next slide. Not done yet. So, um, some, some comments we got from them, they basically want some increase of, um, patrols or, or, or I guess enforcement, we would call it, um, and would like to see implemented some measures in those areas where we've identified speeding. Um, and then a general concern about what happens as a community grows, as traffic grows, um, and some comments and concerns about truck traffic diversion. Um, as highways get more congested, um, it's not just trucks, it's all vehicles. Um, these, these automated navigation systems are really good about recommending an alternate route through a neighborhood that might be two minutes shorter, uh, but they pull you off a freeway and take you through a written neighborhood, causing some other problems. And then other type of calming requirements, uh, these were interesting support for better signage and enforcement of school seeds, uh, speed zones. And we did mention enforce automated enforcement was kind of a 50/50 positive, negative. Um, again, equal positive and negative feedback yours for these, kind of your speed signs, the, those, um, speed radar feedback signs. The new IT definition of traffic calming does not really consider signs as a very good traffic calming, uh, tool. People have to bathe a sign. Uh, those speed zones signs can help, but then they get old after a while. Again, some concerns, but some support for the use of, um, what we call some deflection devices, either speed bumps, vertical deflection, or roundabouts which create horizontal deflection. The goal of both of those is to slow vehicles down. Concerns that radar signs have no consequence and are ineffective because they, they are not enforcing anything. Um, and we have, yeah, I've probably noticed that a lot of those radar feedback signs now, they no longer show your speed after your one or two miles an hour, they will switch to say slow down because there was a problem with some drivers wanting to see if it would go to 99. So, um, we've changed some learning that the traffic engineers experienced is that, all right, we're not going to tell you that your speed, how much you're speeding, we're just going to tell you to slow down and put actually some direction on what to do, not just information. So, um, and then again, support for increasing enforcement, but enforcement is expensive and it's difficult to do it in a lot of places at the same time. I think now we're going to be.
So, um, oh no, we're still, we're still, we're still there.
I apologize. It's been a long week. Um, so we had these three areas, locations where public comments that we received before we started, uh, correlated with the observed speeding data. So those first four sites, uh, you'd already received comments from the public that those were areas where they believed speeding was happening and the data we collected confirmed that. Um, the next set of, uh, five locations, uh, you can see those are some fairly main arterial roadways and they talk about US two and 522, um, and Freelands. Um, so arterial streets where there was a concern that, well, we're even speeding there, that, um, whatever that speed limit was, uh, those, those devices, they, they wanted to see something done, but it's really not a neighborhood traffic calming, uh, type solution. Uh, you wouldn't typically put speed humps, um, on a highway. Uh, and then the third set of four projects were interesting is those are areas where we noted specific, um, and significant speeding problems, but there were no public concerns, um, about the speeding occurring there. And those are some of those entry points, but also more areas where there's not a lot of, there's not people living adjacent to that street. So there's not someone sitting on their porch or going out in and out of their driveway or walking along the street to notice that the vehicles are speeding. So it's occurring, um, but not generating a concern.
So I, I didn't turn in my survey. I'll express concern about Roosevelt.
One more. But that is one of the benefits of this, this new survey, uh, speed survey data is, is pretty amazing in terms of what we can learn. We, we took one month worth of data, um, in April and May. You can get a year. We can sort it by time of day. We just did against, again, this 85th percentile, um, over that period, kind of looking for the high points, uh, because that's what people notice. Next line. There.
There it is. So, uh, at the P three committee meeting, uh, councilmember, member Beaumont expressed some concern that the first survey that went out wasn't, uh, uh, didn't reach a large enough, uh, demographic. So we went back out, uh, and we, uh, we went to, um, Monroe Christian, uh, and they put us in the newsletter and we did, uh, um, the chamber and the Rotary Club and, uh, we reached out to the HOA managers. So we got 113 responses, which is one more than 112 we got from the first one. Um, it was a little bit of a, uh, simpler survey. I think the big takeaway was 85% of the respondents supported considering more restrictive, uh, traffic calming measures. And it was 67 on the first one. So it was even more support, uh, from that demographic for the traffic calming.
Great. Next slide.
We have a question from councilmember Gimmel.
Yeah, I get the, but the overwhelming consensus was is they want traffic calming because of the speed. So I guess the piece that I need maybe a little more to come back on this is in for, on the enforcement side. Cause when I look at the statistics for enforcement on tickets, we average about 66 tickets written a month. Um, so that's what, a little over two a day. Um, I would love to see a heat map of issuance of ticket because we don't see that data. We just see volume. Are the tickets being written in the areas that we have identified through data that this is where we have speeding issues? Is there a, is there a relationship between those two? Or maybe the reason why we don't have it in other areas because it's being enforced in the other? I don't know. But it just, it seems to me that we'd have, uh, the ability, because that's our number one tool right out of the get, right, is our police force and enforcement. Um, and those numbers just seem really low to me. The average, I mean, if you straight line the last three years, it's 800 tickets a year. So a little over three a day, 2.2 to be exact, but.
We do have a monthly meeting on traffic calming with PD and we could use GIS to overlay the data with where they're issuing tickets. So.
That would be awesome.
Bring that up.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Did the data that you pulled indicate anything about like time of day that speed is more of a concern? Is there?
We, we didn't dive that deep into it. It is, it is there. We could, we could get that level, but at, at this point, we just try to get, stay at very high level. We'd often, actually for a neighborhood street, we typically would see the opposite of what you saw in the previous presentation where your speeds are going down during the peak. Cause when they're on the congested roadway, it's, there's a lot of people there. But then when they get to their residential street, they're now in a hurry and they can go faster because there's no congestion there. So it tends to peak in the AM and PM. Um, also peaks when people can see it. So someone has to be at home to notice that it's happening. Again, that's why it was interesting with the data to see it happens in some places where no one has a concern because they are, they are observing it or experiencing it.
Like Roosevelt.
Like Roosevelt.
Okay. Uh, any other questions before we continue? All right, go ahead and continue.
Oh, I will say we've been doing some research into different programs that provide this data. Uh, and there's all kinds of options available. There's, there is some programs that are very user friendly and very granular. They're just quite expensive on a annual subscription. And then there's kind of a medium solution. And then there's kind of the lower end stuff where we're doing a lot of the work internally, uh, to get the data out of it. So if you want, you really can get down to the hour every single day of what's going on on every street.
I guess, and I guess I'm still kind of on my questions, so still have the mic. Um, the, uh, the reason why I'm digging so much on that side is because we've gone to the public for votes for cameras and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. And maybe the, maybe the temperature has changed there. Um, but last time we took that pulse, it was an overwhelming, we're not interested, uh, side of the equation. And we abandoned, you know, all of our association with that, uh, that is a lever. So I'm very interested in these type of levers that, these are ones that we can pull that won't take capital investment. Obviously it would take resources from, uh, from, on the police side, but for a start and look at where are we already utilizing those resources and are we focused in those areas?
Thank you. Other questions? All right, go ahead.
And related to that, you know, we did notice that there was correlation between your citizen concerns and real problems. So that's also a great place to start is when a citizen brings up a concern, check there and they can tell you what time their concern is, whether it's AM, PM. So again, pretty, pretty good assessment that they were, um, generally correct where they were seeing these speeding problems. So we looked at, um, Bothell Edmunds Federal Way in Mill Creek. Cities in, pretty close by, similar size, uh, Federal Way bigger, but I know the Federal Way's traffic engineer and he's been doing traffic calming probably longer than anyone else. They actually have a proactive traffic calming program. They look like we did for potential traffic calming locations and budget for in advance and begin to do things even before the residents, uh, begin to complain. They try to anticipate where those kinds of problems may occur. So, uh, some of the things that they do, um, they also can, and that's actually this first one, provisions to remove traffic calming devices, I'll give credit to Federal Way. They also monitor and make sure that what they did is working. And if it's not working, they change and they may take something out. Um, because sometimes they, uh, again, a speed hump works really well, right? Where the speed hump is, but it can also frustrates drivers and then you just move that speeding problem quarter mile down the street or even 400 feet down the street. Um, so following up on what you do is important. Um, then different criteria for eligibility. Um, another one that used to be hard to, to get cut through percent, how much of a traffic, uh, sometimes in a neighborhood problem, it's vehicles that are cutting through a neighborhood to get somewhere else. Um, this same data that picks up speeds, um, we can ask it or we can ask for data on the users of a segment of roadway. So on this one block segment, where did those drivers come from and where did they go? And so you can see, are those trips ending, ending close by to that problem? Or are they just passing all the way through because they're avoiding some congestion? So which might tell you the problem is somewhere else. And if you fix the other problem they're avoiding, they won't cut through this neighborhood anymore. Um, and then crash history should also be a consideration. Has, has, have crashes actually occurred there? You'd want to very much prioritize those types of locations. So again, a GIS exercise of overlaying your annual crash data. Um, like you talked about in multimodal level of service, are there pedestrian facilities or not? If we know that there are pedestrians and/or bicycles mixing in that roadway, it's more important that we keep the speed down and your, your level of service really is lower speed, not more speed. Um, and then a scoring threshold so you can kind of compare sites to one another. And so everyone has limited resources, so you can't fix everything at once. You need to figure out how to prioritize those improvements. Um, and then a big difference, um, all the other agencies allowed for device devices with what we call vertical deflection. Um, and all of them pretty much acknowledge that signs and pavement markings alone, um, don't get you there. Next slide. So here are some examples of different, uh, these are treatments that provide vertical deflection and some estimated costs for those. Uh, the one on the upper left, a speed hump. Uh, uh, any, these costs may look a lot for such a small device, but, uh, part of installing something like this, where this cost is including the data collection and the analysis and making sure that it is actually the right place to do it, then the design, then getting a contractor, having the contractor build it. It's, it adds up quickly. And so, um, the upper right is what we call a speed table. So a little longer, um, a raised section, um, has a little bit of a different performance, slows, slows, slows traffic down a little less than a speed hump would, uh, but also can be a little more comfortable in areas where you want that. Uh, the speed cushion, uh, you can kind of see in the picture on the lower left, uh, between the Xs, you can see that the, the hump, uh, or the existing pavement remains. And that is done so that larger emergency vehicles with wide wheel bases can actually drive through it without experiencing the vertical, vertical deflection. But the average passenger car is going to hit a part of that hump somewhere and be slowed down. And then on the bottom right is a raised crosswalk, particularly where we have, um, high pedestrian volumes mixing with vehicles. Uh, we are now slowing the vehicle down. Our, our interest is let's slow them down where the pedestrians are crossing the street. It doesn't really matter as much what they're doing 500 feet either direction of the crosswalk. We want to slow them down right at this location. Next slide. So again, I mentioned a little, um, So again, I mentioned the little fire and police, we involved, the staff involved them, made sure to get their impact. We looked up some, this is some national information, on the additional delay in response time for installing some of these vertical, vertical treatments, and there's also a traffic circle, a horizontal treatment in there as well. So there isn't, there isn't an impact, it's relatively small, but it can become cumulative if you install 100 speed bumps that the same fire truck has to use to get to a location. Now we're talking about 90 seconds of additional travel time, that's probably not desirable. So again, keeping track of your program, making sure you're not creating an obstacle course that emergency vehicles can't navigate well enough. So staff went out and reached out to emergency services and the Monroe School District. Both fire and the school district, again, prefer vertical calming methods, which makes perfect sense, both of them have large vehicles. And large vehicles, school buses in particular, have pretty large turning diameters, difficult for them to maneuver the same type of kind of horizontal deflection that would slow down a car. And if we make it big enough to accommodate a bus or a fire truck, that horizontal deflection doesn't really help a car. The car can still go through faster than we'd like it to. But they did support the vertical deflections as long as we could design them, so that those larger wheelbase vehicles would not experience the full brunt of that vertical deflection that would slow down a typical passenger car or motorcycle. Next slide. So recommended updates to your policy, which staff has drafted a new one for you to take a look at, but the key parts of it are to allow traffic calmings with vertical deflection, and considering emergency services, utilities, and understanding that that's going to come with more project costs. Once you start constructing things, that's going to be more expensive than, than signing. We recommend that you look at, including crash history when evaluating those locations, so that those locations with documented crash history certainly get taken care of first. That doesn't mean you don't address areas where there's risk of crashes, but start with known locations. Refine your eligibility requirements, it's going to take some staff time to look at that, but looking at the condition of the pavement, the current operating speeds, as we've already talked about, making sure that is that facility, is part of the speeding problem because it's not built to your current design standards? Is it a rural road that really ought to become urban, which might inform a future project? And then looking at how to handle and prioritize projects based on safety and dealing with your unfunded project list, there always will be one, so how do we prioritize them to get the most bang for the buck? And then finally, number five, ensure that improvements follow appropriate regulations, both for the safety of the users and to reduce your risk. The manual and uniform traffic control devices, MUTCD, that is sort of our traffic engineer's bible, so to speak, and it's what every lawyer will look at. If there is a claim about something that happens with either a vertical deflection or even a sign in the wrong place, you know, that can create liability. So we want to make sure that everything that gets installed is designed and approved by a licensed professional engineer, it's constructed by the city according to your standards, and that is going to take additional staff time as well. So based on what we saw, and some of the input, the city's already addressed, these are some high priority locations. Sounds like there's one more that the mayor has. It's on, it's second priority, we can slide that one over to the left, maybe. So we got close, it's on the list. So again, based on the data we observed, these are locations to consider fairly soon. Combining that with locations near schools, and then looking for, and essentially responding to community input, because they are your eyes and ears, they hear and see things, and they share them with you, and then you can go confirm what you need to do out there. Again, as we learned from Federal Way, monitor them, are they really working? Did we solve that? Nice thing about this data is, a month after you install one of these things, you can go online, collect that same data and see, did it work? How low, how much lower are the speeds? And then promote your activity, let the public know that you are responding to them and making improvements, take credit for those good things that you do. So here's an example of what we think might work. This is, this is what we call an offset speed table for a larger vehicle. If we don't think we can kind of fit in the, the one with the slots for the wheelbase, this is again, a pretty big, it's, sorry, the horizontal deflection takes place over a long distance, it's not as noticeable, so a large vehicle can do it, but we try to avoid this on a school bus route or a primary emergency vehicle route. Just imagine, you know, the kids in a school bus, and you don't necessarily want the school bus going the wrong way either. So it's more for fire vehicle, or sorry, police and fire to be able to avoid it if they want to. Next slide. So here's a speed cushion, that's something you could look at on Curry Road. Next slide. Here's a crosswalk that had a speeding, you know, documented high speeds near this crosswalk, so this might be an appropriate location for a raised crosswalk to lower the speeds right at that location. Next slide. That is it. Unless you have more questions for Derek or myself.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Gimble.
Yeah, I gotta imagine that we've got data from other cities too. Do we have, is there some sort of data that would tell us like, hey, what's the, what's the difference between increased enforcement and the reduction of speed as opposed to what we get out of, you're saying, hey, we could put it in, and then you instantly know, right? So of the action that's been taken by others with the calming devices, what do they traditionally see when they put it in? Obviously, you gotta calibrate to get it in the right spot, but what would you expect to see by putting in a calming device like you just put, as opposed to what you would do, you'd get if you just increased enforcement?
That's a great question, I don't have a good answer, but I can find one.
That would be great.
I can ask, actually, I'd suggest that staff talk to Rick Perez at City of Federal Way, he's probably looked at that.
Because my mind goes to, like, we're just trying to solve the speed issue. And me personally, what's the most cost-effective way, you know, to do that is where my head goes? And so these are all options.
I can tell you, one client that we've worked with, their police department was not super thrilled about enhanced enforcement, just because they are trying to create a positive relationship with the citizens, and it's typically a resident that's going to get that speeding ticket, which is why we try to do the education first, to say, did you look at your speedometer when you were taking your child to school? Because I can tell you, when I was the engineering manager at City of Issaquah, we did do special emphasis enforcement with our new motorcycle, and the loudest complacent in one neighborhood was actually the first person to get a ticket. And it was, it, it can be effective, it does wear off like anything else, and it's difficult for you to maintain that level of enforcement. I think that's why most agencies and what even the Institute of Transportation Engineers had to come up with these kind of physical things, because eventually trying to assign an officer to a street every day to deal with a speeding problem becomes more than $15,000 to install a device. So that's that balance.
And that makes logical sense to me, but I'd love to see data that proves that out, right? You know, hey, we've had this, you know, this city here, we spent this amount of money, and then this is what we've seen sustained. Because what you just talked about, I've seen it all the time, where people just go around in their car, it doesn't really, and then it actually can, and then I would love to see collision data associated too, because sometimes it actually, oh. And then the last piece, liability associated with calming devices if they're not appropriately maintained. Real thing?
Real thing. And installed, and designed. If you, if you don't follow the rules, yeah, you could have a problem.
So the initial cost is just that, I mean, there's going to be an increased maintenance cost to it.
Either staff or engineer is going to look at this and go, is this the right place? Or what is the correct device for this place? What signs do I have to put ahead of that device? You gotta warn the driver, you know, just don't put a raised crosswalk in, but there's a certain distance ahead of it that you have to warn the driver that it's going to be there, because if you don't, then they will hit it, break their car, call you, and say, you didn't warn me, your fault, that my tires popped in my suspension rope.
Yeah, I'd be interested, you know, from a finance director perspective, if they've got allocated budget in some of these cities that have large traffic calming policies. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
With regard to traffic cameras, did both of you guys take studies or ask questions about the sentiment on traffic cameras?
We just added in the one survey. The second one was mostly focused on the, the response to the more active traffic calming measures.
When was the last time community sentiment was kind of taken on that, since Councilmember Gimble mentioned?
I think the, it would have just been when it was posed to the voters back in circa 20.
Twelve?
Yeah.
Probably 12.
12, yeah. So we would have, we would have done, that's when they would have put it out to the voters in a general election and, and got feedback.
I would be really interested in getting some more data on that, just because there's been sort of a turnaround, it seems like, in sentiment. Maybe, maybe that's not correct. There's a bill right now cruising through the legislature that's probably going to pass, kind of giving cities more authority for their traffic camera placement, and it also gives the citizens a lot more information about the program. And just to have some data, I was looking at Seattle and Kirkland's results with it so far, when it comes to kind of cost efficiency. Kirkland deployed a pilot program in 2019 in school zones, and with the 25 mile per hour limit, they dropped, incitements dropped by, infractions dropped by 37% the next year. Seattle, 67% reduction in tickets issued after cameras were installed. So I think it's a, it's a really smart kind of low-hanging fruit options for us to at least survey, especially as, with consideration to the Monroe Christian situation where there was conversations about traffic through there in the mornings. I think that'd be a great spot to, to look at. And yeah, I would just be intrigued to see where the people stand on it now.
Thank you. And just to follow up, one of the reasons why I was asking the question about time of day is that, please correct me or clarify if I have this wrong, but school zone cameras would be only in school zones?
Correct, and they're often only active during the time when students are going to be present.
Correct, so, so the, the point of me asking that is that if, if our complaints are primarily around pedestrians going to and from school, then the school zone cameras would be there to act as a deterrent when we are getting most of our complaints versus 2:00 AM in the morning, because somebody's doing 60 down Main Street or Freelands or whatever the case is. You know, it's like a tree, if a tree falls in the forest and nobody, you know, hears the engine, did it happen? So anyway, to, you know, to, I just wanted to highlight that, that versus having a speed table on Main Street or 179th, where you're going to be driving over it, you know, after this meeting tonight, if we're heading that way, the, the speed hump is there to slow down traffic, but if our complaints are when school is in session, and when kids are on the, you know, walking to and from school, then that's one benefit to the concept of a speed zone camera. And the goal there, the goal of all of this is deterrence, is to get people to actually drive the speed limit. It's not about money, it's, it's about safety, and it's about getting people to follow the code. So Councilmember Walker, if you're finding data that shows over time the number of tickets declines, that shows that people are adjusting to the situation. So, and then I use my ways a lot when I'm driving, and it tells me when there's a speed camera coming up or a red light camera, and I take note of that and double-check my speed. And so it changes, it, it makes me more aware of my behavior. Councilmember Beaumont, did I see your flag going up?
Thank you. So speaking of low-hanging fruit, I am curious if we have done any public awareness campaigns around this. I know when school starts every year, usually in your message, we have some sort of PSA-type information out about, you know, remember school zones, watch for students, and that kind of thing. I'm in marketing and PR, and so I'm always thinking about, what can we do for free? Maybe we, at the very beginning, we could even do it now, is just remind people, hey, you know, this is a problem in our community, and maybe it's on our Facebook website, mayor's message, whatever, there have been some issues. Maybe just talk about watch for people, maybe it's pedestrian awareness, I think a lot of, it's not just the motorists, it's also pedestrians jumping out and not, you know, being aware of what they need to be doing. And I just think that that is a very low-hanging fruit. It's absolutely free, and just would be maybe something we do every quarter. Hey, guess what, it's time to remind people, watch, or look around you, be safe. Just a thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Walker. The Washington Transportation Safety Committee found that the school area with the highest rate of compliance with the 20 mile per hour speed limit, Show Walter Middle School and Tuck Willow, where 6% of drivers were exceeding the limit, and they currently have an automatic school zone camera system in place. So I just wanted to echo, I think school zones only, in my mind, would, would be that, that combination of meeting people's ideas about there being some kind of mitigation put in place, but also not being overly restrictive on, on their driving. So, yeah, I appreciated your point, you summarized what I was trying to say perfectly, so.
Thank you. So where are we going from here? So we've just given a presentation, and what are the next steps?
So we've prepared draft policy. So this was the presentation and discussion, and so we'll take feedback that we hear from this, and we'll reexamine the policy and make any edits, and then we will present the policy for approval.
Okay, for, for discussion and approval.
Yeah.
Perfect, yes. Thank you very much. Anything further this evening, councilmembers? Okay, and I think we are now at the end of our agenda. We have no further business this evening, and thank you both very much for the presentation, it was really informative. Unless there is objection, I was going to say opposition, unless there's objection, we will be adjourned, and we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody, thank you all.